Folks, hear me, y'all? All right. Good evening, everyone. I would like to call tonight's meeting of the DePuma Park City Council to order with a clerk. Please call the roll.
Mayor Circe.
Here.
Councilmember Landman. Councilmember Landman. I see. Councilmember is here, but Councilmember Dibala.
Here.
Councilmember Schlegel.
Here.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Here.
Councilmember Hansak.
Here.
And Councilmember Weslek, I think is not here yet.
All right. Well, thank you all for bearing with us as we move this meeting to a virtual one. And as some may be aware, there was a another transformer that blew, I believe this time on Grant Avenue. And the result is power outage impacting the building. So fingers crossed. We will be, there will be light in the auditorium and we will be back there on Wednesday. So I just ask for everyone to bear with us as we are navigating with this council, our first Zoom-based council meeting. Just as a reminder, tonight's meeting is a special session focused solely on budget reconciliation. We will not be going through the typical formalities of our regularly scheduled meetings. And that is in large part because we are really trying to be good stewards of our time. So there will not be council comments this evening, nor will there be public comments this evening in order to allow for more fruitful discussions regarding budget reconciliation. And I just want to quickly check it. I apologize because I don't have paper. With that, I just want to make sure that city management is on the call. Checking really quickly, city management team. Okay, I see Rock is here.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Finance Director Susan Chung sends her regrets. She is elder senior.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so what I would like to do is go through the process for tonight. Just to ensure that we're able to make tonight as fruitful as possible. Also keeping in mind that we will have another budget, our final budget reconciliation session on Wednesday. So the big thing for tonight is to try to get some aspects of agreement or at least some window of consensus on a few items that are currently on our reconciliation list. The first is to make sure that we have a conversation tonight regarding the the traffic calming projects so that we're all on the same, at least can have a little bit more of a discussion around the traffic calming list. We went through it last week, but tonight I would be interested in at least just getting a couple of hand boats so that we know where we stand. Then we will talk through the staff reconciliation items that have already been presented to us. But I would like to get some hand boats just to get an understanding of where we stand with those and we'll point those out. Then we will start our discussion about our own reconciliation items, I should say. For the for the staff reconciliation items, we will not be discussing the the uncertainty reserve. That is something that we will discuss on Wednesday. I think it would be very helpful for us to talk about that after we've had an opportunity to kind of talk about other items and kind of know where we stand financially. Then we will move into a discussion about council proposed items to the overall budget. I know that council member Schlegel has a little brief presentation regarding his items that he would like to share and we'll provide him with an opportunity to do that. Also, if other members of council have any additional items that they would like to have added to the reconciliation list or clarify items that are currently on the reconciliation list or speak to or advocate for your items, you will also, you will also have time to do that as well. Any questions about the process? I will say I am trying to keep the conversations because I know that many of us have had busy days and in light of the fact that we will also have a meeting on Wednesday, I'm trying to make sure that we're doing what we can to be efficient. So I'm asking for us to try to keep each segment of the conversation to forty-five minutes each. So that is forty-five minutes to talk about the traffic calming list to see if there's any additional questions or items that we want to propose before we take the hand votes. Forty-five minutes to to talk about staff-specific reconciliation items. Again, that we'll take the hand boat on. Again, we're not talking about reserves assigned nor unassigned this evening. And then we will have about forty-five minutes to discuss any additional reconciliation items that folks are proposing or the items that are currently on the list. That time can change depending on how quickly we're able to get through the other items, which I know we've spoken about at length during prior meetings. Any, any questions before we get started? Okay, excellent. Now, when we went virtual, I did not figure out who was going to be responsible for sharing the screen, particularly as it relates to the traffic calming list that we received, that we discussed on Wednesday. So who will be on the staff side managing the reconciliation list that we can see online?
And I can share my screen.
Thank you so much, Deputy City Manager Eubanks.
Are we ready to proceed?
Yes, we are.
Okay, and you'd like me to share the traffic calming?
Yes, the list of the actual projects, please.
All right, give me, give me one moment.
No worries. And while you're pulling that up, Councilmember Dibala, I see your hand.
Thank you. And that's my question. How do you want us on the council to signal? Does every, can everybody, does everybody have a version of Zoom that has their raise hand? Or do you want, how do you want us to do this? Are we always going in the same order?
Well, actually, everyone, if you raise your hand, I am hoping that Zoom usually will let you know the order of folks. I'm looking at the panelist list, but it's easy to just use the hand raise function. I can see who raises their hands and then I will be able to call on you.
Great, thank you.
No worries.
Mayor, can you see my screen?
I can.
Good.
All right. And I apologize to folks. I may look as if I am staring off into the ether, but my eyes are not as good as they used to be and I am, I need to make it a little bigger. So I just want to quickly go through, just open the floor for any additional points of discussion from staff on this list based, I know that there was a couple of follow-up items based on the conversation on Wednesday. I just wanted to see whether or not there was any update in terms of any of the items that needed additional follow-up.
So I'll start by addressing the chart at the top in orange. You'll see that there are some highlighted items that didn't appear in the last document. And the highlighted items here in yellow are to represent the way in which the four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that's in the FY twenty-six proposed budget will need to be redistributed in order to count for all of the projects that have been proposed thus far by council. And so ultimately, you'll see that there have been three additions to the general fund, which reflect the fact that the traffic calming and pedestrian safety line, which I believe was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars initially, has been redistributed to new sidewalk design and construction and traffic studies. So ultimately, what this would mean, Mayor and Council, is that if the proposed projects were voted on and funded today, they would total four hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. You'd be short thirty-three thousand. And the four twenty-five would be redistributed such that you have a red light camera fund that accounts for new sidewalk design and construction as well as a general fund that accounts for new sidewalk design and construction. You'd have traffic calming and pedestrian safety also from the general fund, which was what it was in a proposed budget, but then you'd have an additional traffic study general fund in addition to the red light camera traffic study item. This is to, again, account for the fact that those four twenty-five initially consisted of two different sources. And to redistribute them, we have to add additional items to the general fund that were only red light camera fund to begin with. Beyond that, the only other update, Council, that we would like to share with you is that there had been a question about whether or not the Hammond Avenue Traffic Study could be incorporated into the Ward Six Traffic Study that's planned for FY twenty-five to begin, but will likely carry out, or will carry over into FY twenty-six. The answer to that inquiry is that yes, it can be incorporated into the Ward Six Traffic Study at some cost, currently unknown. However, we do think that, as for instance, if the, another traffic study or fifty thousand dollars was included, specifically Flower was included in FY twenty-six, the combination of the seventy-five thousand dollars that's allocated in FY twenty-five and the fifty thousand dollars would accommodate both of those traffic studies as well as the addition of Hammond Avenue to Ward Six. I hope that's clear enough.
It is. Thank you very much, Mr. Eubanks. And so therefore, adding the resources for Hammond to allow it to be incorporated into the New Hampshire Gardens Traffic Study is with something that would need to be part of this, the FY twenty-six budget in order to make that happen, correct?
Yes, if you add an additional traffic study, the proceeds for that traffic study between the existing money and the additional traffic study, we feel that we can, from a combined expense standpoint, cover two traffic studies with one of them being the addition to Hammond.
Okay, thank you. Just checking to see if there are any hands. Okay, seeing no hands, thank you so much, Mr. Eubanks. Just want to open the floor to see if there are any comments or points of discussion from members of council about the list? Or points of clarification? Councilmember Dibala?
Yes, just very quickly. So then, following on the traffic studies, so if there were to be any other traffic studies, then we would be needing to add money? Did I, did I?
Oh, correct. Sorry, this is.
Sorry, any other traffic studies beyond Flowers at the top of the list? And then after that, there's potentially one or two more. So the, the idea would be that to do anything else, we would need to add money?
So correct. As currently, the current funded project list is over the current proposed staff allocation.
Right.
And what I would say is that we only really have staff capacity for for two traffic studies.
Right.
For you.
Right, okay. May I have the floor?
Yes, you may.
Did anybody else have questions of fact before I go into my pitch? Okay, so so I had proposed that back a couple of weeks ago that we add thirty thousand dollars to make sure that we could do everything on this list. It appears that it's thirty-three thousand dollars. But to do everything on this list that's been proposed, that appears to be the total. So just to keep that in mind, including all the adjustments about moving one project into another and collapsing a couple of things, we talked last week about taking a few things off the list, delaying them, adding, adding an item for traffic study for Flower Avenue. All that together, I'm just clarifying, comes to thirty-three thousand dollars more than was originally allocated. And so I'm just pointing that out. Because I think that actually is pretty good. Thanks. That's it for now.
Thank you, Councilmember Dibala. Councilmember Wesley?
Thanks. And this actually, I apologize, I needed to check something, but this is going back to the the discussion earlier about the New Hampshire Gardens Traffic Study. And thank you so much, Mr. Eubanks, about clarifying that the Hammond Ave question could be folded into the existing study. I just wanted to confirm the other aspect that I hope would be folded in. Basically, because it has to do with Wildwood, which is a core part of the current traffic study, which is assessing if sidewalk bump outs should, pedestrian bump outs should be placed on Wildwood and the one that's just around the corner, that would address the school bus stops for for MCPS school buses. Is that, I assume that could be a part of the existing study, but I just really want clarification on that.
Yeah, so this is Acting Director McNally. The focus of the Ward Six Traffic Study are both Glenwood and Wildwood and Glenside. So those would be the focus and improvements to those would be the main focus of the study itself.
And just to confirm, Mr. McNally, and I know that Director Braithwaite had mentioned this in the past, that if there are traffic calmings, including things like bump outs near bus, bus stops that are along those roads, that this is, that is something that would be within scope. I just want to verify that. Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Schlegel? I think you're on mute.
Yeah, thank you. I apologize. I wanted to know about the sequencing, to ask about the sequencing of the traffic study in New Hampshire Gardens and the traffic calming measures in New Hampshire Gardens. I'm wondering if the study would be evaluating conditions before those traffic calming measures were put in place or after?
I'll defer to Director Braithwaite on kind of the timing of the implementation. The study itself is planned to begin in sometime in May and run all the way until December. And so the construction may occur as we are moving through the study.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. What Devin has laid out, the additional items that you see for traffic calming in the New Hampshire Gardens area includes two speed bumps on Kennewick Avenue and a speed bump on Hammond at Anne. And is there anything else? I think that is the extent of it. It would be our intention to install those early in the fiscal year, so after July first. And part of the reason for that is these have been resident requests for quite some time now. And we have indicated in prior years that we would be moving these forward in expedited fashion with the FY twenty-six budget.
Great, thank you. So I think I understand correctly that the, the traffic calming measures that might be within the scope of the traffic study could, the hope is to have those done to, around two months into when the traffic study is underway. Is that correct?
Well, I think, oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, you know, it'll be dependent on the mobilization of our contractor and what other projects are taking place, but it'll be our intention to install those early in the fiscal year. The data gathering is going to start once we sign the contract, which hopefully will be within the month of May. So I imagine they'll be gathering data prior to those. The Kennewick in particular will likely not play a large role in the traffic study analysis for the Wildwood and Glenside area. The focus will likely be on those two major thoroughfares.
Okay, great. So you might get some before and after data. Thank you.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yeah, thank you, which reminds me of one other thing I meant to point out. So in, by contrast, on Lincoln, the proposal is to put the speed bumps in first, then understanding that the staff can only, has only capacity for two traffic studies at once and that the one traffic study may be done, may be done as soon as December to save the, the sec, the Lincoln Avenue Traffic Study for after the speed bumps to incorporate that as, as part of the quote existing condition and have that be at the end of the year. That I understand that to be the case, that it can't be right away. And I just wanted to let the rest of council and residents know and to make sure that I got that straight, that, that if we were to approve that, it wouldn't be till the end of the fiscal year before we would be able to get started.
Well, and I just might add, as we've mentioned, the staff capacity issue for when we're saying two traffic studies, I know that that could potentially be confusing because one of those two is the one we're starting this year that will roll into next year. And so it's possible, I mean, those of you who've been through this before, they can be rather long and arduous, particularly the community review, comment and sense of agreement. We have done these in the past where we've spent quite a many months trying to get neighborhood agreement on a course of action. So it could be very well that we're still working on New Hampshire Gardens well into FY twenty-six. I think we've alluded to all along that the solutions there are going to be more than just the basic, put in some speed bumps and hope that people slow down. We're really looking at much more significant potential impacts to changing driver behavior. And so those are going to be, you know, challenging conversations and, and we can full well imagine that it may take quite a while to go through the process. So, you know, I, I think Devin and I have done our best to say, if you include both Flower and Lincoln in FY twenty-six, it's not likely that we will be able to complete or get those rolling while we're still completing New Hampshire Gardens. So we'll be in a, in a situation where we potentially will not have started that, one of them by the end of the fiscal year.
Can folks not hear me?
I can now.
Excellent. So just following up on, on that point, one question I had was about the timing for getting the contracting and all of those things in place so that the next traffic study could get underway in the next fiscal year, similar to how New Hampshire Gardens is somewhat set up or we paid for it in FY twenty-five. But the amount of work that goes into actually trying to figure out the scope of the traffic study can take a little, a little time. Do, do you all think that even establishing the contracting mechanism for Lincoln where we can ultimately perhaps not do the traffic study in FY twenty-six but be prepared to have brought on a contractor in FY twenty-six to start the work in FY twenty-seven? Is that something that is feasible to think through?
So what I would say is we can, we, we can try to stage a study. So get the RFP put together and ready for release ahead of, kind of, so for example, if we were to say Flower is the next, we could start in the fall putting together that RFP. We wouldn't put the RFP out unless we were sure that we had the funds allocated and available for use. So I think that's to your question. The difficulty is we wouldn't want to release an RFP too soon and get responses back and then not be able to start the project fairly soon after awarding a contract. So, so we would, the, the answer is if there was additional funds to support a third study, we could start preparing it, but that doesn't mean we would necessarily release it until we've wrapped up whatever study we were, or very close to wrapping up whatever study. Or very close to wrapping up whatever study we were currently working on.
Alright, thank you. Um Councilmember Lehman, I saw a hand. I just wanna make sure that that you didn't have a question. Alright, any other points of discussion for the the list? Council uh Councilmember, uh Director Braithwaite.
Yeah, and I apologize, this may have more to do with my own confusion about this process. But I wanted to point out or just flag, so we're all aware. Um we have a pot of funds of thir- three hundred thousand dollars uh for new sidewalks. Of that, we've said in advance, a hundred and fifty thousand is going to go into. Two sidewalks, we think likely that will go through the process this year and be ready for construction. So although in your totals, you only have the one fifty. So I just didn't wanna get to a point of confusion where you see the budget and the number is actually a hundred and fifty thousand dollars more. So that new sidewalk design will be three hundred thousand plus the hundred and two. You know, i- if I'm making, if I'm making that point clearly. Pardon me?
Those are Darwin and Hodges.
Uh Darwin and Thir- uh no, it's um Chest uh Chestnut and Thirteenth. Darwin and Hodges are going to be built with uh F Y twenty five funds.
Oh, right, thank you.
And that should get started in the next few weeks.
And I just wanna make sure for for folks that are watching and making sure that folks are able to follow. Deputy City Manager Eubanks kind of walked us through this a little bit. Um but that first, the the non, the yes, that that first amount. Where half is spent on construction, um and the one fifty is noted there. And then the items that are highlighted in yellow um is are those projects that are are a direct reflection of the reconciliation. Activities that the council has taken to date. So I think we we have it all here, but but definitely um. I'm relying on staff to make sure that we're not missing anything in terms of the calculations.
Yeah, just um just for additional clarity, the. This total here is highlighted currently um that the total that will show in the budget is three hundred. And and so the the amount that we're including in the four twenty five is less than one fifty. That would be allocated to Thirteenth and Chestnut. So this this total of four twenty. Four twenty five is what's available for the proposed projects.
How did Councilmember Sligo?
Uh yes, um I appreciated uh Councilmember DeBala pointing out, reminding us that you had. Proposed a thirty thousand additional amount and that we've come out pretty close to that at thirty three thousand. Um I am reminded uh by Director Braithwaite's. Discussion of the larger sidewalk funds about our S H A sidewalk. Uh budget, and if my recollection is correct, that was reduced already. And I'm wondering what uh sort of what this what the state is of the sidewalks. That are under consideration still for um those are A D A improvements, correct? In this F Y twenty six and, you know, balancing that against other things. Whether we could slow down even further. I know this is kind of like proposing a reconciliation item, so if I'm out of order, please stop me. But I'm wondering, Director Braithwaite, if you could talk about what you have lined up in the queue. To get beyond what we have now, which is about eighty five percent A D A compliance.
Yes, that um that percentage is as a reflection of city sidewalks, not um on city sidewalk.
Okay.
Um in terms of the activity we've we've taken to date on state highways, um we've had um. You know, the funding for that didn't start at the same time. It's only been a few years and. Um so we've moved more slowly through through the list. Um our proposal or our assumption uh based on condition of sidewalk and need for adjustments and known A D A violations. Um for related to state highway, our our next priority was Piney Branch Road between Eastern and Philadelphia. Um we had hoped to get the full uh request of funding so we could do both sides of the block. With a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh we're fairly certain that we won't only be able to do one side. And we may not even be able to complete that one side uh with that amount of funding.
Okay, and if 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 you could characterize the the one side that you're going to pick. Do you see it as having existing safety concerns beyond width in terms of unevenness and slope and issues at driveways?
Yes, all of the above. I- in addition, there's some drainage issues and other things that we address when we. Get into an area, we try to take care of all uh situations with the uh A D A compliance work.
Great, I just wanted to have the public here that clarified that it is a it's an improvement and not just a replacement of a sidewalk.
Great. Okay, any other points of discussions before we move into hand vote territory? Okay, so uh not seeing any. So the way that we're gonna do the hand votes. Please know that um hand votes uh are a way for for us to get. It 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 kind of counts, but it's not as official. It's like a formalized vote. But it gives me a way to determine things like um where will the council. Um lean in terms of the majority of the projects that are listed here. Um and then that way I can, I will know um whether or not we could. Make things a little easier in terms of our voting on um Wednesday, our final vote of these items. Uh we can make things a little easier if I already know upfront that most people are in an agreement with the list. Or there is a particular item where there may be a little bit of a split in how to treat the votes um on Wednesday. So what we're gonna do right now, um if folks can please use their hand raise function, um we're gonna go through. Each of the items that are listed here um and. Uh you just put your hand up if you are in favor of that particular project. And I'll ask for uh for those, trying to think through how to do this. Yeah, all I need you to do is just put your hand up if you're in favor of something. Um and then I that way I will know kind of a signal whether or not we're dealing with the majority. And Councilmember Lemon?
Sorry to interrupt you, Madam Mayor, but with the sharing screen function, I'm not able to see the whole council's images. Maybe that's because I don't know how to manipulate on screen, but it's possible that if we could make the. We could make the document smaller or take it down or something, we could. If, I don't know, I can't see the vote. I will be able to see the full vote. Um I don't know.
Yeah, I'm asking for if folks could use the hand raise function. If you use the hand raise function, um you can. And see the full list of participants, but there are a lot of participants here. Um you can see who who was lifting it, who was raising their hands in support. Um let me just check really quickly. You can also. You can also, yes, um you can also, um if you click on view. Next to um next to recording in the top or the the top kind of. Where you would close out, you can click on view and then um you can uh select. Uh hide the non um video participants. And given that most of our staff are not on video, um it'll give you an opportunity to see. The majority of our council members, although I'm not seeing Councilmember Hanzak. So that's another way too, if you want to to see folks. But um what I'm asking for people to do, you could do the physical hand raise, but I would prefer. Um if you were to just select the hand raise function, that also will allow me to see from the list who's who's selecting, yes. And if you want to see the full list of participants, you just click on participants and you will see um. The full list of um the names of folks and when people click their hand, you will see that their hand is next to them. Their name. And it was very, there was lots of tutorial on Zoom, but I hope that helps.
Mayor, seriously, if I hide self, I'm gonna hide self right now, and if I do that, can others still see me? Let me see. Um because then I could see six boxes. Can you all still see me?
Yes, so you're you're hiding self, but you're hiding yourself from yourself, so you don't have to look at yourself.
But I'll know whether I raised my own hand, so if you if you hide self, you'll be able to see six boxes. And as soon as there's everybody votes, um Mister McNally and and Director Braithwaite will slide out of you.
Okay, alright, so is everybody, everyone ready to go via Zoom? Alright. Um so we're gonna take um the first item, Grant Ave between Piney Branch and Holly at Chestnut. The uh Mark Crosswalk. All those in favor? Oh, Councilmember Gilbert is is in there too. Alright, awesome. Wildwood and Glenside Design. All those in favor? Perfect. Um Wildwood and Glenside Sidewalk Construction. All those in favor? The Hammond Ave between Anne and Lockley Sidewalk. For for design, all those in favor?
Madam Mayor, a member of the public has pointed out in the chat that they can't see the hands being raised, and maybe you could just. Give the total um each time, because they can't see it on screen.
Okay, let's do, let's see here, we have one, two, three, four. Just trying to make sure. Can everyone please keep their hand raised? We are on um. The Hammond Ave between Anne and Lockley Sidewalk Design, perfect. So uh for myself, yes, Councilmember Hanzak, yes, Councilmember Westlake, yes, Councilmember DeBala, yes. Councilmember Gilbert, yes. Councilmember Landman, yes. Councilmember Schlegel, yes. Next item, um the block of Holton to Hammond Wildwood Speed Hump Construction. All those in favor? Raise your hands. Uh Mayor Cersei, yes. Councilmember Schlegel, yes. Councilmember Hanzak, yes. Councilmember Westlake, yes. Councilmember DeBala, yes. Councilmember Gilbert, yes. Councilmember Landman, yes. Um the removal of. Uh or the delay of Jackson, I'm sorry, thank you so much, because I'm struggling to see. Garland Ave Sidewalk Design. All those in favor of the Garland Avenue Sidewalk Design? Hands, please.
Excuse me, uh just question, are we, is this a question in favor of funding the design or in favor of delaying the design? Wasn't clear on what you said.
Sure, this is the Garland Avenue Sidewalk Design. And there is a funding requi- uh a funding request for one hundred and forty five thousand. It's funding the design. So if if you're not for funding the design, then then don't raise your hand now. Okay?
And and Count, uh uh Mayor, if I may, to to be clear, there are three related items. The other two, Central and Jackson, the recommendation is to not fund the design right now. But to delay it. This is the one where the recommendation is to fund the design now. Does that help?
Excellent. Okay, I just wanna make sure that everyone has their hands. Okay, Mayor Cersei, yes. Councilmember Hanzak, yes. Councilmember DeBala, yes. Councilmember Westlake, yes. Councilmember Landman, yes. Councilmember Gilbert, yes. Councilmember Schlegel, yes. Okay, the removal of the Jackson Ave Missing Sidewalk Section. Between Hilton Ave and Garland Ave. All those in favor of removing this item? From the F Y twenty six budget? Mayor Cersei, yes. Councilmember Hanzak, yes. Councilmember DeBala, yes. Councilmember Westlake, yes. Councilmember Landman, yes. Councilmember Schlegel, yes. Councilmember Gilbert, yes. Um the next item is the removal of the Central Ave. Sidewalk Proposal from the F Y twenty six budget. All those in favor of that removal? Can you raise your hands, please? Thank you. Uh Mayor Cersei, yes. Councilmember DeBala, yes. Councilmember Schlegel, yes. Councilmember Westlake, yes. Councilmember Landman, yes. Councilmember Gilbert, yes. Councilmember Hanzak, yes. Next item is the seventy eight hundred block of Kennewick Speed Humps. All those in favor of those speed humps, please raise your hands. Okay? Okay. Uh Mayor Cersei, yes. Councilmember Westlake, yes. Councilmember Hanzak, yes. Councilmember Landman, yes. Councilmember DeBala, yes. Councilmember Schlegel, yes. Councilmember Gilbert, yes. Next item is uh Flower Avenue Traffic Study. For fifty thousand. All those in favor of the Flower Avenue between Carroll and Sligo Traffic Study? Hands. Okay. Okay, um Mayor Cersei, yes. Councilmember Hanzak, yes. Councilmember DeBala, yes. Councilmember Westlake, yes. Councilmember Gilbert, yes. Councilmember Landman, yes. And Councilmember Schlegel, yes.
Madam Mayor, can I make a suggestion? In the interest of saving your voice in just a little time, maybe you can just say that it's unanimous. And then if you have an objection, just like the objection or the the persons who are not interested in the project.
I I am trying to um make sure that I actually have names tied to votes. Yeah, one says, yeah, if if I could count.
I just want you, I just want you to have a little voice by the end of the night, okay?
Uh thank you so much, Councilmember Gilbert. Hancock between Sherman and Lee. All those in favor of the design work for that? See it, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Okay, I can count to seven, it's unanimous. Thank you, Councilmember Gilbert. Alright, the next is the Chestnut Ave Traffic Study Removal. As a reminder, this was the one where the residents um decided to defer. A traffic study. All those in favor of the removal of this item? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, it's unanimous. Next item, uh Wildwood and Merrwood Speed Hump Construction. Okay, all those in favor? Two, three, four, five, six, seven, it's unanimous. Alright, um Lincoln Ave Speed Humps between Boring and Larch. And between Traffic Circle and Haywood Speed Humps, and that's for construction. All those in favor? Two, three, four, five, six, seven. Okay, it's unanimous. Uh Hammond and Anne Speed Humps. Construction, all those in favor? Two, three, four, five, six, seven, it's unanimous. Okay, uh, Hammond Between Anne and Lockney Traffic Study? All those in favor?
Well, uh, could I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
Is this still separately listed as fifty thousand, or is it fifty thousand that we know is being added to that other study?
Yes, so it's it's still being, because we don't know just yet the final um, estimate, so our best estimate is the amount for what was proposed for an independent, a separate traffic study. Um, but staff have told us that they can incorporate, that the contractors can incorporate this traffic study into the New Hampshire Gardens Traffic Study that is underway, we just don't know what that change, the cost of that changes, changes though. Fingers crossed it will be less than this, but we don't know for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all those in favor of the Lock, of the Hammond Between Anne and Lockney Traffic Study? Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six. Seven, okay. Alright, it's unanimous?
Excuse me, abstain, can you abstain me there? It's on the vote, no.
Okay, so Councilmember.
Going back and forth, yep.
Okay, Councilmember Hansak abstains, okay. And if you, if if you want to vote no, don't click your hand, and then that way I'll know that I'll need to call names. Um. The Prince George's Ave and Belfort Place line with the new Belfort Place Sidewalk uh, raised walkway, construction for the raised walkway. All those in favor? Two, three, four, six, seven, okay, it's unanimous. Okay, the next item Orchard Ave Between Fourth Ave and Fifth Ave Speed Hump? All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, unanimous? Um, the removal of the Orchard and Fifth Traffic Study? All those in favor of that removal? Two, three, four, five, six, seven, it's unanimous? Uh, the addition of the Lincoln? We're almost done, the addition of the Lincoln Traffic Study?
I'm sorry, I I should have asked this earlier, Mayor Cersei. Is this the the traffic study that's strictly in Ward Two for the time being?
Uh, my understanding, and I I I think that that this is something for um, Council, I'm sorry, Director Braithwaite and Mr. McNally to address, I believe when we spoke last week, that there was a possibility that as you all would develop the scope, you could potentially look at other, the other end of Lincoln, but I don't wanna speak for you, so Director Braithwaite.
Y- yeah, I believe that's what we um, said at the last meeting, that we could, if there was an interest in the full length from Maple to uh, Elm, we could include that in the traffic study, that said, um, the situation uh, between Maple and Carol is quite different, as there's no on-street parking uh, than the rest of the the section, so it may um, could be combined, but it may have a very different um, set of conditions.
Thank you.
And that was my understanding it as well, just to um, comment as the sponsor of this. That we would look at that, thank you.
Okay. All those in favor of the addition of the Lincoln Traffic Study? One, two, three, four, five. Six. Okay, um, I'm going to read the names. Wait a minute, um, if if you're for it, can you please keep your hands, okay? Um, the eyes, uh, Mayor Cersei, uh, Councilmember Dibala, Councilmember Gilbert, Councilmember Westlake, Councilmember Schlegel, Councilmember Landman. Um, Councilmember Hansak, would you like to, um, what is your vote?
My vote is no.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hansak is a nay. Okay, and the the last item is the I think this was proposed, but we'll go ahead and vote, the removal of a Grant Ave Speed Hump Proposal, Councilmember Landman. Okay, all those in favor?
That was.
That was, I think, I I think that was a that that, that was a dupe, correct?
Indeed, because it turned out there was going to be a raised crosswalk uh, very close to the location for the potential uh, speed hub and raised crosswalk did the job, so it was discussed, but it probably shouldn't have even been included here on the list, because it was discussed and then shelved, when we found out.
Thank you very much, okay, no need to vote on that. And not recommended, okay, yep, and it was a, it was your proposal, you withdrew, okay.
However. At the time that we saw the draft, the fact that the crosswalk was raised as opposed to just painted, apparently that was not initially included in the budget, and so uh, last week, uh, uh, Director Braithwaite mentioned that maybe that's what ought to be on there, uh, or ought to be somehow signaled, because there's a cost associated with the raised uh, crosswalk. May, I see, uh, Mr. McNally's gonna clarify, thank you.
Yes, and and the current cost estimate there of fifty-five-hundred dollars reflects the raised crosswalk.
Councilmember Landman, yes, they did make that adjustment, if you if you recall, I believe last week it said two-hundred-and-fifty dollars in error, and we found that it was supposed to be a raised crosswalk, so it's now, we now voted in favor of it being fifty-five-hundred.
Correct, and therefore the speed hub disappears.
Yep. Okay. Councilmember Hansak?
Yes, I just have a question, um, perhaps I should have asked this before the hand vote, but uh, would would any of my colleagues care to elaborate um, why we're voting in favor of two traffic studies when the staff has um, clearly indicated that they don't have the capacity to do both of those in one year, or have I misunderstood the staff?
Uh, I understood that it was no more than two per year, but perhaps I'm misunderstood.
I guess I understood that they are going to be continuing the one that is taking place uh, in Ward Six. Uh, and everyone just voted except for me, uh, for adding on Hammond to the existing project, making it even broader, and then we voted in favor of the Flower Avenue um, traffic study, which to me adds up to two, am I is it because I'm construing that the one that's continuing from last year is in fact affecting this year, and that's not an accurate interpretation, this is, maybe this is also a question for staff? Feel free, anyone feel free to answer.
So what I would say is, from a staff perspective, we have the Ward Six Traffic Study that will run through a good portion of FY twenty-six, and that we would have room for an additional traffic study after that one is completed in FY twenty-six.
Which which, as per what we've just done a hand vote on, that would include the Flower Avenue study, yes? So, um, Councilmember, fellow Councilmember colleagues, what I am hearing is that we've just voted in favor of something that staff has specifically told us that they don't have the bandwidth to do, so I'm just asking, is it because people aren't sure what they're gonna vote for ultimately, are we asking the staff to go above and beyond what they actually have the capacity to do? Does anything care to share? Or yes, vote, yeah, thank you.
May I have the floor?
Please, yes, please, Councilmember.
My, my understanding was that two sta- two traffic studies at the, at a time. So, one's starting now, it'll be over at some point, we don't know when. And after that, we would start and 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 while we were doing that, we would queue up the second one, that's Flower. And then when the first one is done, we would queue up what amounts to the third one, to hang into twenty-seven, and so that was my understanding. Was that, that that no one, no, I did not expect that there would be three traffic studies going on at the same time.
I see, so you're expecting they would be sequenced, yes. Okay.
And 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 Councilmember Hansak, thank you for for making that point, and and I hear you, because I was going back and forth about uh, about that very issue, um. For me, I I kind of saw the New Hampshire Gardens, because I kinda considered the Lincoln Traffic Study to be perhaps pretty large in scale as well, but I I recognized that it was gonna take um, some time to get that scope together, so in my mind, I'm not imagining us in any way doing the Lincoln work in twenty-six. My my thought is that in Lincoln, best case scenario, towards the latter part of the fiscal year, we get it funded, and hopefully by that time, you know, this time, April, May of twenty-twenty-six, um, staff would be in a position where the New Hampshire Gardens um, work would be done, and we're just getting Lincoln funded, and that would then allow for there to be a little bit more staging, recognizing full-heartedly that uh, uh, Doug, Mr. McNally has already said, hey, you know, we we don't wanna put it out to bid if we don't know for sure when we're gonna start, I I understand that, um, but I think it it if we can try um, to to at least get it out for bid, recognizing some of the challenges that goes into the contracting piece, it it would make sense to do so.
Okay, if I if I can just, um, I know this is not the time for this discussion, but just placeholder for the future. Uh, my no vote stands, um, and the reasoning Councilmember Dibala and others is it is not that I don't think this is important, but because the Houston Avenue Possible Traffic Study that I have talked about on a number of occasions has somehow not made this list, nor been compared with a uh, scoring, I would like to see that before I make an absolute placeholder for this project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Councilmember, Councilmember Hansak, um, your hands still raised, Councilmembers Schlegel?
Um, thank you, um, Councilmember Hansak, thank you for for raising that question, because I I had been under the impression that two studies could be done simultaneously. If, if realistically this um, I mean, it looks like the pecking order here is, um, obviously to proceed with the New Hampshire Gardens than the Flower Avenue. And if in the pecking order, we're pretty sure that, um, it would be unlikely to disperse funds in FY twenty-six, then I'd rather not budget for for dispersing funds in FY twenty-six for Lincoln, so I know this is crystal ball um, thinking, but could I, could I hear again from staff perhaps, what is the what is the thinking about when attention might actually be turned to the Lincoln Study? And if it's an RFP, when would we actually be needing to fund such a study? Because it could be delayed by a month or two and go into FY twenty-seven, I think that's something for us to return to and think about.
So, so the way we would conduct traffic studies is that we would have one active study going at any one time, so we would, we can queue studies up by putting together kind of the scope of work and getting together an RFP, but we would want to be completing and wrapping up that study. And by wrapping up, I mean, we are done with any major revisions, we are, we are simply kind of like doing the uh, organizing and that sort of work before we would release an RFP, uh, mainly because it's a lot of work um, from both the HCD Department and Public Works to support the consultant, um, and then also review drafts, work in collecting data. Um, and so the assumption is, is that we can likely complete if we hold to our kind of usual, like, our our planned uh, timeline, two traffic studies in one fiscal year. And that is assuming that there are no delays or additional work required based on community feedback, um, delays kind of in collecting data or anything like that. So, any, a third traffic study would be highly unlikely to be completed or even uh, begin before fiscal year twenty-seven.
Thank you.
May I um, comment?
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes, thank you, I thank everybody for their vote, I do understand that that this traffic study that would be um, at least Ward Two in Lincoln, if not parts of Ward Three and maybe more um, would come after the other two. The first study is, was scheduled for twenty-five, and it is starting in twenty-five, but it it's gonna hang into twenty-six. Who knows how long? Um, second study start in twenty-six, who knows how long it will take, we, I understand that. I think it is important to remember that the reason that we're talking about a traffic study for Lincoln is because the only no pun intended, concrete solution that the staff came up with in response to the to the many residents' concerns about side swipe cars, about all the things that we've discussed um, that are problems on Lincoln, um, was to add more traffic bumps, and all the other items that were suggested by residents are the kinds of things that you can't do unless you do a traffic study. So I think it is important to the residents on Lincoln to know that their suggestions for uh, more serious uh, more emphatic traffic control than a couple more speed bumps was heard, and that's why it's important to me to get it on the list now, even though there will be we all understand there, you know, we've taken a chance here on when it might actually start, um, thank you.
Councilmember Westlake?
Um, my question, I I, this is maybe a point of order question, um, but on Wednesday we will be voting on this one, for example, because I I think I I stand by my vote tonight, but I I need to think on it, um, so we are voting again on Wednesday, correct?
We are, but I was hoping to not have to go line by line, it sounds like, uh, there are some council members that would like to have a se- uh, a single vote on the Lincoln Traffic Study. And we could vote on all of the other items that we voted on tonight as a package, I I would like to avoid having to go through fifteen lines, items, and having to vote again, so, um, we could have, uh, to fi- for the final vote, we could have, uh, the final vote be a package that consists of all of the items and the Lincoln Avenue um, traffic study separate.
I I would support that, thank you.
Same, that too, and I, uh, uh, Councilmember Hansak, I appreciate you raising this um, issue, and because it elicited a very helpful explanation about the from Mr. McNally, um, it clarified for me what the realistic prospects are, and I think it's important because it would potentially bring us back under the budget limitations we had set for ourselves initially, so it's not, nothing to have a vote on this, so I appreciate your point being raised, thank you.
Councilmember Schlegel?
And and just as an observation, I don't know the history of whether these ki- types of discussions about traffic studies routinely happen in budget season, but it's it's important that I I noticed that Councilmember Hansak is is hoping to get a flag planted in the ground on Houston, saying this area is marked for an upcoming traffic study, we hope, and so I wonder whether, just as we have a CIP that's five years, whether going forward, we we might wanna look at developing a traffic study plan, it's a five-year plan, so there's a little more assurance for residents and council members, and and uh, not relying on institutional memory.
Yeah, just as a reminder for my, for newer colleagues, um, there is a a new process that staff have undertaken regarding all of this, so, um, in terms of the request process for, um, Um sidewalks and traffic calming as well as the process for identifying. Um whether traffic studies are needed that requires scoring um of staff on the on the merits of the individual projects. Um and that is the new process. So. Um this is just the first time that we're going through where for the budget where we're actually approving um. The individual projects during the budget process. In the past, because of the petition process, we would typically have voted on. The merit of an individual traffic calming request to be included in the budget before they're included in the budget.
And there is in the in the CIP, there is a ongoing allocation for traffic studies. Uh began, I believe, in FY twenty five. Um and to reiterate the mayor's point. Um the intent is to allow council to make the decision from year to year about traffic studies as well as. Um traffic calming and sidewalks. And it's certainly up to council if you'd like us to plan out five years. Um but it would be a change in our process and council's process from from what the admin regulations are currently. To have them planned out um for future years.
Thank you for those reminders, both of you.
Okay, um can can we move on? We've we've gone over time for this item. Um I see Councilmember Hanzak, your hand.
I'm sorry, Mayor. One quick thing is just um. If we were to try to fit within the the total budget here, it is just my observation that. We don't actually have an accurate price point for the Hammond Avenue Additional Traffic Study. And so it is a little. Dare I say confusing to try to vote on something that has a fifty K line item. Uh where that would make the difference between whether we could or couldn't fund something at the bottom of this list in the given budget. Anyway, but I we don't have to. Get into that right now.
Yeah, and 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 I do just want to remind um remind uh everyone that this is a a. Budget and until we budget, we won't have final numbers. So with all of this, uh. If we don't uh earmark monies for staff to do their due diligence to determine what the actual cost will be for items that. We're not gonna be able to. We're not, we're not gonna be able to pass a budget. So the purpose of the budget is to come up with a rough estimate. Right now, unfortunately, the rough estimate that we have is a typical cost of a traffic study. Um once staff have a better understanding of what the actual cost would be. Um similar to how they will be coming to us with the Ward six traffic study. Um. You know, once those actual costs are determined, then you know, as you are aware, Councilmember Hanzak, we would then lead into. Budget um a budget amendment that would ultimately reflect those cost savings that would ultimately make their way back into the reserve. So. Um. Understand that in an ideal world, we would know the exact cost of a lot of these things, but all of all of these numbers are are estimates. And based on staff experience in terms of what the cost would be.
Yeah, I'm just, I I guess I'm just pointing out that it's as a rather high dollar value based on what they have. Suggested, and I get that we need to budget that, but it it could make the difference about whether or not we we. Voted in favor or didn't vote in favor of one of the items at the bottom of the list, but I'll I'll leave it at that. Like if 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 they were to adjust it to say forty thousand or or something like that, um based on their their best guess, it seems rather high. But I just just. We can leave it.
Okay, Councilmember DeBala?
Yeah, I was gonna say something similar that that they're asking staff to take another look at that and also. Um if we are going to uh rethink the vote that we just took on on Lincoln, which is presumed to rate a fifty. Then we should rethink the vote. We should revote on the lower items. The couple at the end that are ranked thirty, twenty eight, whatever. I can't read exactly. Um because it may be that people would prefer to do a higher ranked traffic study and not do. Something that was very low ranked, um even if it doesn't cost a lot of money. Thank you.
We have, we've reached out to um the potential or likely. Candidate for the traffic study for Ward six, and we are unlikely to get a better estimate than fifty thousand between now and Wednesday.
Yeah, understood.
So um again, wanting to to move us forward, um it it sounds like. Um unless there's a motion otherwise, that we will be pulling the Lincoln sidewalk project out as a se- as a separate vote. Uh but as it stands right now, the the other items that we've done the hand votes on today, we can vote on on Wednesday as a package. Okay, moving to the next item, Councilmember Hanzak.
I apologize, Mayor. I thought it was lowered.
Okay.
Yeah, I did just ask to have the other two voted on again as well.
So to have Hammond?
No, um the last two, the Orchard Avenue, and I think it's Prince George's.
Okay, so it sounds like there's a a desire to have. The, so Councilmember DeBala, just wanna make sure I'm clear. Uh you're talking about the Orchard uh Speed Hump?
Yes.
And the Prince George's Belfort Place Speed Hump?
Crosswalk, yes. Excuse me, walkway.
Okay, alright, so um there will be. Four votes of these projects on Wednesday, the first being all of the items from line fifteen. To thirty. Then we have separate votes for Prince George's Orchard and the Lincoln Traffic Study. Okay, alright, moving on to the next item. Can we go to the reconciliation um for the staff items? Okay, alright, so um what I would like for us to do um is. Just go through quickly um. To see whether um. Sorry, trying to see, um the, okay, um. Are there any concerns uh for discussion uh regarding the. Revenue reckon- general fund revenue reconciliation items that are being proposed by staff? So for example, the decrease in the police protection, the SAP grant, um the uh. Tax due uh adjustment for uh the crossing guards, the. Increase in the library aid revenue, um and the increase from the county in terms of the capo- cap- cable grant revenue. Councilmember DeBala?
Yes, I'm not sure if this is a staff question or not. Um. So maybe it needs to wait, but on the utility rate, it seems to me there's two proposals that one is built into the budget already. So it's not on this reconciliation list, which is why I'm not sure it's an appropriate question right now. To be able to understand better what that what the staff is proposing. On the utility tax rate and how much revenue that would bring in. So that we can compare it to the proposal that Councilmember Schlegel is making. So maybe that doesn't fit right now. But that is a question that I that I have.
Yeah, so I'm I I I appreciate your comment, um but I I I think that that. The Councilmember Schlegel's proposal, and it it would be easier for us to discuss all of that at that time.
Okay, great, thank you.
Um so just want to confirm, are there any points of discussion for the council-proposed revenue items? Okay, all, so let's do a quick hand vote um in terms of the counts, um I'm sorry, the staff proposed. Reconciliation item, you can do them as a as a bulk. Um all those in favor of accepting the counts, um the staff's uh. Proposed revenue reconciliation items, um please say aye. Or raise your hand virtually. Perfect. Alright, excellent. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Okay, it's unanimous. When it comes to the proposed money from staff. Okay, perfect. So um this is for uh. Staff, we just want to make sure that those items um we can add to the list of the bulk votes for Wednesday. Okay, let's move to the general fund expenditure proposals um that staff has put forward. Um I want to see whether or not there are any items um that city management would like to discuss. Before we do the walkthrough.
Mayor, uh there might be a couple of things that are just worth providing some clarity to council as you as you review the the list. So we'll begin with the. I believe this shows as Row thirty two um increase in. Traffic calming and sidewalk projects. Um just to piggyback off of the discussion that you all just had. The current gap is thirty three thousand based on the proposed projects. Um and the ones that um in in the uh. Current likelihood of those items passing based on the council hand votes. Um the proposed. Increase by Councilmember DeBala was thirty thousand, and so you all would have to, if you again wanted to cover that full cost. Add an additional thirty three, excuse me, the three thousand dollars to that thirty. The next item worth discussing is Row thirty seven and thirty eight. Mayor, you had proposed a increase to the general fund of ninety thousand dollars to cover the cost of. The implementation of the restrictive covenants that was broken out into a. Um uh staff and or facilitation line item of forty thousand dollars. And then a advertising line item of fifty thousand. And Councilmember Schlegel, you had proposed what ultimately amounted to the removal of all Atrium Fund. And the placement of those funds that were accounted for in the general fund to a assigned reserve. The suggested amount was four hundred and eighty five thousand, and I believe there was a second amount. Um that accounted for the rest to adequately account for what was proposed in the budget. Um the the amount of the adjustment to the general fund. Would have to be a decrease of one point two million. And this is the amount from Row forty one that below, if you scroll down. You'll see that it has been um reassigned to the assigned reserve, which is reflected here. The additional amounts of money that you were attempting to account for are not in the proposed budget. But are reconciliation items. And so Row twenty four, the additional two hundred and eighty five thousand. Rather than account for that in your proposal, what would need to happen is council would take a vote. And as a voting measure, decide not to include it in the reconciliation. And the line items forty three, forty four, and forty five. Reflects what we discussed a little bit earlier, which is the transfer of existing funds. Within the general fund, again, to account for where money would need to move. In order to accommodate the proposed traffic calming and sidewalk projects. The the item that's been included in the assigned reserve is a item from. Councilmember Landman, which is the movement of eighty five thousand dollars from the general fund to the. Assigned reserve for the financial review. Um excuse me, that should actually read uh. I believe it should read housing review. Yeah, that should not read financial review. It should be uh housing study, which will change now. Um and those are all of the. Items worth noting, but we can answer any questions should there be any.
Can we make sure um that for the housing review that we label that for Councilmember Landman?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, are you asking for a vote on this all as a package or are we gonna go?
We're gonna go through each item. Okay, um so let's let's go through. There's a few items before we get into um. There are some that we're not going to be able to discuss tonight. Um so for example. As um Deputy Director Eubanks mentioned. Items forty online forty three, forty four, and forty five in terms of the traffic calming that's contingent on. The amount that we ultimately land on for the um traffic calming and sidewalk proposed projects because. Um there are some items that will be voted on separately during the meeting next week. Um we can't, we we can't vote on those uh vote on those uh tonight. Um so let's go to um our uh the public works items. That are um that are not highlighted in yellow. Um so just as a reminder, there was the. Um monies that we received from um our District Twenty delegation where. Um we had received the the, we're we're expecting to receive funds for um the public works. Design work. So there is a a reduction in the general fund and then the increase for with the the amounts there. Um let's hold. Just wanna hold really quickly, it's the food insecurity grants. And real quick for um for staff, the. Just trying to pair in real time, whether or not there was another proposal. Okay, so the um Community Connectors. Community connectors is here, the multi-family grants, and the emergency rental assistance. Okay, okay. I can do this before we go into um any votes because I'm seeing now that um. People may have proposals that might play into the other um. Items that city management um has here. Um especially because I do recall there were discussions regarding, you know, emergency rental assistance and those kinds of things. So I'm gonna kind of deviate a little bit and ask uh folks if you have any additional reconciliation items. That you would like to propose tonight that's not already on this list? Because we're not gonna be able to necessarily vote on any of the general fund expenditures until we have the full list. Uh so. I know Councilmember Schlegel, you have your a presentation on on your items. I just want to check to see. If there are any other members of council that have reconciliation items that you want to bring to the table tonight so that we can keep track of them. Councilmember Landman?
I'm not, I don't have an item, I'm, I'm asking for a clarification of something. Uh, which was, it's mentioned community connectors, is that on here for some kind of a reconciliation? Because I'm not seeing it. That was a contract.
Sure, can HCD provide, um, rationale for why the social service community connector was listed as a reconciliation item increase?
Director McNally, I can respond to that. Uh, council. Like the other HCD items that are, um, included in rows twenty-seven through twenty-nine. They were intended to be included in the FY twenty-six budget, but they were forgotten, um, quite honestly. And so these are programs that we understand, um, that council wants to continue, and so we are recommending that they be added as a part of the reconciliation. Um, the total allotted dollars for the community connector program is three hundred thousand. We expect that we could spend, um, in this year, a total of a hundred and fifty. The other one fifty would be, um, uh, in the city's unassigned reserve until, uh, future years.
Um, and may I ask a question of Mr. Eubanks? So, we, I had had a discussion with, uh, written to the city staff about the newly created, um, program in, um. As you serve, that might potentially. Carry out some of the functions in this hundred and fifty thousand dollar package. And, uh, and, uh, the city manager had mentioned a plan to investigate that further. That could potentially affect that number substantially, one way or the other. And I wonder, uh, I, that was a letter written during the course of this back and forth on the budget, and I had not heard anything back yet, so. I wonder whether there are any potential adjustments that are gonna be made by staff to that number. Um, between now and, you know, Wednesday or something, or if this is fixed and, and. Um, we're just gonna assume that that, that's still the right number. Now that we have a social service agency providing a number of the functions initially, uh, thought to be part of that project.
We do not have any intention, Councilmember Landman, to change that dollar amount between now and today.
And I do just wanna clarify, the city does not have a social service. Agency, like, so there is a nonprofit organization, like, we have numerous nonprofit organizations. That the city has perhaps provided grant funds to, um, but that, that entity is, is, does not. Provide social services on behalf of the city. I, I, I do think it's really important that we kind of don't put the cart before the horse in terms of. N- naming or earmarking, you know, these kinds of, um, funding opportunities that may be. Competed, um, and kind of noting like a specific. Uh, partner at this stage, right, cause I think right now where we are is scoping the project. Um, and there is a real possibility that there may be, depending on, you know, council guidance, of course. A, a process by which someone would need to apply in order to be selected to facilitate this program on the city's behalf. So, you know, again.
The, the implication of my comment was that the, the scope of what we had sought with the community connector program. To do in-house for the city, that there was perhaps now a social service agency already. Providing some of those navigator services, so the need would have diminished, that was, that was the. Point of the letter that I wrote and, um, the conversation I had with the city manager, not to prejudge where a contractor go. Clearly that inappropriate.
But again, I, I wanna stress, the city does not have a social service agency, there is a nonprofit. Organization within the city, uh, that's different than there being some. Actual, you know, city-sponsored. Government entity working on, on, on that regard, um. You know, there's a nonprofit that provides social services. Like we have other nonprofits within the city that provides aspects of social service connectivity and social service resources.
Councilmember Schlegel?
Uh, yes, thank you, so, um, these three HCD items. In lines twenty-seven through twenty-nine. Uh, they were, they were not in the proposed budget in early March, correct?
They were not included in the FY twenty-six proposed budget, that's right.
So, uh, if included now, there, they look to be, uh. Well. Let me see, roughly three hundred thirty-six thousand, so in essence, they would raise the. Uh, taken out themselves, they would raise the property tax rate by, um, a cent and, and a, another fraction, is that correct?
No, we intended to adjust for the inclusion, um, and you have to forgive me, I don't remember all the details. But one of, one of the adjustments is the downward adjustment of the, uh, uh, CIP, S H A sidewalks. Give me a moment to look through where the other adjustments are, and if anyone else from the city manager's office recalls offhand where. Will we attempted to account for the additions, please, let me know. Uh, Deputy City Manager Eubanks, uh, it would be in the speed and red light camera fund. Thank you, sir. Um, and, and I do just wanna clarify, um, when we build the budget. It's both a combination of, uh, items that we're projecting for FY twenty-five. In terms of what's going to dollars that are going to be spent. So what we're building into FY twenty-six. And the circumstance with all three of these, there's two options, we can either say. Um, or project that we're gonna spend the dollars in FY twenty-five. Or we can say that we're not, and then we're gonna build them into FY twenty-six. For all three of these items, these were part of the ARPA swap transfer. So all three of those are currently built into the FY twenty-five budget. Um, so this is in essentially projected surplus that we're carrying into FY twenty-six.
Thanks for that reminder, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bolden, and, um, for both things, both, uh, highlighting. Where the additional three hundred thousand dollars is coming from and the reminder, um. So the other decrease, uh, also S H A sidewalks is three hundred thousand dollars and that's coming from. Um, and you'll see here the increase in HCD, uh, grants for multifamily building improvements.
All right, unmuted, um, Councilmember Dibala.
And, and again, just to restate, these several items. Were intended to be in the budget, they were in the fiscal twenty-five budget. Uh, they're not adding something new or changing something, it, they're, they're a, an accounting. Oversight, shall we see, adjusting, adjusting accounting, accounting that, that probably should have been made in the first place.
Right, they, they were fully, they were fully funded in FY twenty-five. Um, we anticipated utilizing less than budgeted for in FY twenty-five. And so in the projection, we decreased the amount for each of these line items. Um, by the respective amounts here, um, one fifty, fifty, and one thirty-six. We neglected to include those, uh, those same dollars in FY twenty-six, so there was. Uh, tax capacity, if you will, from FY twenty-five that should have been accounted for in twenty-six, but was not, and so now we're trying to. Add those items, um, uh, we also recognize, to your point, Councilmember Schlegel, that. Those dollars, um, may have been filled by other sources. And so we are also trying to find a balance between the additions and the reconciliation. And other adjustments, which is what we just discussed.
Okay, so, um, again, are there any additional? Um, and the reason I'm asking for this is, um, in case there is a need for us to talk through. Additional reconciliation items, uh. I- in combination with any of the items that are currently on the, um, the staff proposed. Um, general fund expenditures, um, so are there any additional reconciliation items that members of council would like to propose? Uh, Councilmember Schlegel?
Um, this is, uh, an attempt to clarify how the accounting has been done for my, um, my. Items about the community center renovation or the atrium project. Um, and so I, I just wanted to make sure it's been divided into three pots, one. Is on line. Forty-three, and that's one point two million. And then, uh, up in the second line in the pink at line twenty-five, I see the two hundred eighty-five thousand. Um, and then I was mystified because I said, where's the other two hundred thousand, but it's, it's farther down in special revenue. Um, and it looks, it looks as it's been registered as. As my proposing that we return state grant funds, and that was not my intent, if that's what it's. If that's what it's reading as, that I'm saying that we forego the grant funds. Um, what I intended was that we would spend the grant fund, um, but reduce. Uh, reduce the, uh, one point two, uh, to maybe one or something.
So the. You are partially correct in that, um, the two hundred thousand dollars in grant funds is reflected in the special revenue. It is not necessarily intended to be a return of those funds, what it currently indicates is that. We are not, we do not, city staff do not have the authority to expend those funds as a part of the FY twenty-six budget. Um, however, if what you're saying, Councilmember, um, Schlegel, is that you would still like those dollars to be included. In the FY twenty-six budget, then yes, we would have to remove this. Um, and I think, uh, also have to note that we don't currently have a atrium project. With a design that is only two hundred thousand dollars, that would be a very different project than what we currently have.
Oh, no, that was not my request, uh, but there's so much, so much good to be done. There that I understand two hundred thousand is not possible, but what I was, the alternate proposal I'd, I'd. Put out last week was to reduce by four eighty-five, which would be the two hundred in the. Which would be two hundred out of the one point two million, plus, um, not taking on the. The adjustment, the staff, um, reconciliation adjustment of two eighty-five, does that make sense?
I, can you repeat what you mean by, the, the first part of what you said, the reduction from the one point two million, I, I don't.
So, as I add the numbers, the, the current, um. Anticipated cost or proposed cost would be one point six eight five.
Yes.
One million six eighty-five.
Yes.
And, um, one of my two proposals last week, uh, was of course to move all of that into the. Unassigned reserve until, uh, a close look could be taken at it, the other was, um, to just, um. Simply reduce it, uh, by four eighty-five, so it would be down to one point two million. Um, and I'm concerned that in, in accounting for that, that staff has suggested that that would involve. The two hundred thousand being returned to the state, and that was not my intention.
Yeah, for clarity, the, the only money that's in the FY twenty-six proposed budget. Is one point two million from the general fund and two hundred thousand dollars in special revenue. So if, if the one point two million is the number that you'd like to see. Included in the proposed budget, then that's currently there, and if you are intending to. Ensure that there's not an additional increase of any. General fund dollars, then you would, council would vote on the reconciliation item. That is an addition of two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars for the atrium, but because that wasn't included in the proposed budget. There's no deduction necessary, you would just simply vote up or down for the two eighty-five.
I see, and then to achieve an additional two hundred, what would the vote be on?
To add two hundred and, as a reduction.
To achieve an additional two hundred reduction, um, because there's one point four million remaining. In other words, there's one point two in former ARPA, now general fund, and then there's two hundred in state grant. So.
Wanted a total, total budget of one point two, then you would. Propose a reduction of two hundred thousand dollars from the general fund, which would, if approved by council. Take the total general fund excluding anything that's. Uh, voted, ordered in the future from one point two million to one million.
Okay, so, um, begging the council's indulgence, could I add that as, um. A possible reconciliation item for colleagues to consider, which would be a two hundred thousand. Reduction. In the.
And Councilmember Schlegel, just to make sure that I'm, we're clear, cause I think. There's a lot of options here regarding the, um. That, that you have proposed regarding the atrium, are you proposing to, um. Remove the proposal to have the. The one point two million, um, moved to the assigned reserve, are you planning to keep that?
Um.
Or do you need to change the amount?
For now, this would be akin to a councilmember Dibala's, um. Uh, saying, loo- looking at Garland, looking at Central, looking, you know, at multiple projects and saying. I'm, 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 you know, saying to colleagues, here, here are two options. What would you, you know, could I convince you on either one of this? So I, I don't expect the council would vote up on moving it all to the general reserve and up on reducing it. That wouldn't make sense, so I'm not sure, first time doing this, so I apologize, I'm. I'm trying to put two options on the table for a complex issue.
And can we scroll down, cause I just wanna make sure, because, uh, um, Deputy City Manager Eubanks mentioned. There, there will be an order to the votes, which is why I had to kinda back off of what I suggested before. Um, when I realized that there are some things that folks are proposing that impact things that staff had proposed, so. So it sounds like for the special revenue. It, it, so are you, you're not proposing, um, decreasing the grant funds, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, is, are, are you okay with us removing this from the reconciliation list?
Yes, yeah, my, my proposal would be reducing the general fund contribution.
Okay, perfect, thank you very much, and so, um. So then in terms of the atrium, it would basically be, um. The. Increase of the two eighty-five, decrease of two hundred. And, oh, or, or, you know, I'm just trying to think through the order. And then vote on whether or not the, the total amount that is, that goes towards the atrium be placed in, um, an assigned reserve.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense, thanks for thinking that through, so it'd be kind of a, a ratcheting, um, vote process.
Okay, so are there any other, um, items that, uh. Members of council would like to add to the reconciliation list? Checking, Councilmember Schlegel, I see your hand, and I know, know you have your presentation, I wanna give you time for that, but I just wanna check to see if there's. Any other reconciliation items that people would like to add to the list. Okay. Okay, seeing none, um, I would like to just take a, a moment to talk about, um. The, uh, my item. The uh, my item in terms of uh the restricted covenants, and I know um. Deputy city manager Eubanks um mentioned the split between. Um, the newspaper legal postings that we were able to get through um. In terms of the change in Annapolis versus having to send multiple first-class um mail items um. Deputy city manager, can you just explain one more time what that temporary assistant uh would, would help us with, do we?
Can't give you a whole lot of detail, mayor, unfortunately, um, so we pulled together these, these estimates pretty quickly. Um, previously, we had discussed an option of uh working with um historic Tacoma. Who has done a lot of work in this space, um, and has provided us with a lot of information, we. There, there are potentially two options, um, one is to utilize them, I guess, uh. To the fullest extent possible, um, and, and uh. Hope that they have some internal capacity to actually facilitate uh what might be required from the city. Um, the other nuance is that perhaps they don't have the facilitation capability, and we may have to employ. Part-time uh someone to aid the city in running what we would consider the city's portion of the program. And so uh a rough estimate based on some similar work that the city clerk's office has done um. Loosely similar would be about forty thousand dollars, um, potentially that forty thousand dollars could include both scenarios. Um, but again, we, we haven't revisited this specifically with historic Tacoma. Um, nor have we had an opportunity to really think what the implementation would look like in a structured way, so this is, this is a ballpark. Um, based on what we could gather in short notice, the legal postings portion of this. Um, in a similar nature is uh kind of a, a, a best guess based on our early conversations with. The likely um uh news agencies where the legal postings would have to exist, it is. Relatively expensive to post for the four-week duration that we would be required to, um, per the new bill. But the early estimate that we've received is about fifty thousand dollars.
Thank you very much, and just uh for my colleagues' um information, the prior council had passed a resolution. Um, outlining next steps for um this uh work and um. As we were debating during the prior fiscal uh budgeting discussions about how we could. Address the, the challenge that we've heard from historic Tacoma numerous times. That we've gone down the path of, of trying to get people to voluntary, vi- voluntarily um. Remove these items from their uh, from their deeds, and we've tried education, and we've tried. Various forms of outreach, and they've spoke, spoken in lots of community meetings, but we're not getting the traction. Um, that we would uh want to see, and while I recognize. Um, and I've heard the comments from Sam that, well, these aren't legally binding, so why are we spending this money? You know, in today's climate. Uh, we're, we're talking about the legalities of a lot of things that I never thought we would have to be debating. Birthright citizenship, uh, aspects of uh diversity, equity, inclusion, equal. Employment opportunity act things, there, there is an attack that is happening right now. On our democracy, and particularly as it relates to people and communities of color. Um, and so I think it's really important that we put our money where our values are. And make sure that we don't allow for, although some may say, oh, this isn't gonna happen, why, why would you ever? We are seeing a lot of things that we never thought could potentially happen. Um, and so I think it's really important for us to do our due diligence to make sure that. We as a city don't even have the, the, the possibility of a backdoor opening to. Allow for discriminatory practices in housing in our city. Uh, councilmember Landon.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, having myself gone door-to-door in my neighborhood to see about getting people to do this. Having successfully about two percent, I endorse your finding that uh to make this happen on a, on a bulk basis requires. Action by the municipality, I would like to uh. Understand how the potential costs of the advertising went from what we estimated of twelve to fifteen thousand. When we did this initial research with um the help of uh Jesse Carpenter, our clerk. To fifty thousand, and I would um, uh, I think she mentioned that she had heard that. We would have to advertise every address, and I think that is something that. There's no basis in the statute as it was enacted that we just saw enacted, that would suggest that that would necessarily be the case. I. Do this for a lot less money by, by coming up with the, with the advertisements. So much space with. That affects the price, so I sincerely hope we can bring the price down, and I know, having spoken to historic Tacoma about this recently. They're very in, in, interested, so. Um, I think this is a very high number for accomplishing this, and I, and I do not think, I think that we should need it all, and I. I don't wanna say take the money out, but I do wanna encourage us to. Treat this as the absolute upper limit, I think it ought to be able to be significantly lower when the, when the time is. When the time comes to place those advertisements, so that's just my perspective, is that this is um. Uh, a, a perhaps up to the nits of caution, overly conservative viewpoint as to what would need to go in the advertisements and make them sell costly. The initial estimate is around fifteen thousand.
Thank you, councilmember Lemon, uh, councilmember Dibala.
So I agree, this is probably really high, and I agree that having also tried to talk to historic Tacoma this week that. That there's potential there, um. I'm, I'm thinking about something that the mayor said a little while ago, which is that this is a budget. And we budget for what our best guess is at any moment, and we hope, and we work to keep that number down, this applies to this. To some of the HCD items, to the traffic study, to all of them. Traffic calming studies of, of projects. Um, it's just something to keep in mind, and that I think applies to this as well. Um, I, I do think we need to do this um for all the reasons that the mayor said, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Doc, Dibala, councilmember Schlegel.
Um, mayor, seriously, I completely agree when you say we have to put our money where our values are on this, um, I had not. Seen this coming, and um, as you all know, it's been an interest of mine to try to hold the property tax rate. Uh, as low as possible at, to signal to residents things, this is not an area where I would want to cut back. Um, hoping that it'd be less, but I wouldn't wanna cut it back here, um, I, I did wanna say though that. Um, as we're going through this process, uh, it would be good, since we have a number of areas where we're, we're. Hopeful that more could end up in unassigned reserves for next year. That there ought to be a way to account for that, so that if possible, we could return some of this. To residents in the form of a lower rate the next year.
Thank you, councilmember Schlegel. Okay. All right, so last call, any other reconciliation items that are not on the list that folks would like to propose? Before I turn things over to councilmember Schlegel. Councilmember Dibala?
Just a question, since we've drifted from the proposing new stuff to talking about stuff on the list, um. When would it be appropriate to ask if anybody has any questions about the uh proposal to? Um, adopt the county's. Tax credits for lower-income homeowners that I proposed, that's already on the list, and so it's not new. Um, are we gonna get to that later, if anybody has any questions?
Cause I think councilmember Schlegel, your, your presentation is just providing folks with some rationale behind your, your recommendations as well, correct? Yeah, so we can move into that stage of the discussion where folks are answering questions and providing additional background regarding their proposed items.
Okay, so then, I'm just gonna make a quick, a quick statement, we've talked about this before. Um, the county, uh, the county has found a way to adopt new higher. Income and other eligibility levels for the low-income tax credit that the state offers. That the county honors, the city honors, I'm suggesting that we adopt the county guidelines, uh, county, county numbers, the higher numbers. And that we put this money in the budget to cover the additional homeowners who we uh presume will be eligible. And if anyone has any questions about that, this, I'm happy to take them, but I think we. Then we already talked about this a couple times, but I wanna just make sure that everyone is clear on what it is and why we're doing it, and how we get the number.
Councilmember Josec.
If there are no questions, I just wanna, uh, I wanna iterate that I'm, I am highly supportive of this particular. Measure, we've had a number of residents who've talked about the importance of trying to figure this out, and has largely. Eluded us because it's been beyond our control as a city to, to be able to do this, or just to be able to afford to do something on our own, so. To me, this is the, um, is a really great strategy, so I think we should try to figure out how to make it work.
Thank you.
And uh, councilmember Dibala, you know, I, I wholeheartedly agree. Uh, had to testify, um, at the county on this bill as well, and I think, um. It is really important for folks to, to understand that um, the compounding nature of this. So as the county is um, has tweaked its criteria, uh, its eligibility criteria. And applied a um inflation um indicator to kind of allow for that amount to change the um. Income eligibility rules to kind of move with inflation, um, it provides. Our residents to be more eligible for that county tax break, but also similarly, they would be eligible for the city tax break as well, so. Um, there is a compounding factor to this, um, that I think is really important, particularly to. Um, our residents that are on fixed incomes and otherwise um. Would, would become eligible through the additional um. The additional income and asset um totals that are now um available, councilmember Dibala.
Yeah, I, you, you remind me uh that I didn't, I neglected to mention that I've had several residents just in the past week. Come to me and say they heard about the county, and what about the city? Because they've just edged over this, the, the, the old guidelines, and they're still within the new ones. Um, so I feel like the need is very, very much there, but um, we don't need to spend a lot of time on this if there are no more questions. I, I think this is, this is the easiest. This is the most effective way to get it, to get at a, a, um, tax relief for some subset of our homeowners.
Agreed. Okay, all right, see no more, no more lights, um, so with that, um, Mr. Eubanks, I know you're sharing your screen. Um, I'm gonna turn things over to councilmember Schlegel, who just wanted to give folks a, a quick run-through of his thoughts regarding um. His, his items. And he has slides to share.
So, um, as soon as councilmember, I'm sorry, his, as soon as deputy director Eubanks is not sharing, I think I'll be able to share. Let's see. Hmm, okay. All right, can you see that?
We can.
Okay, um, you were gracious enough to grant me about five minutes, and I'll try to stick to that. So, uh, colleagues, I completely respect everything that we've been hearing and discussing from residents, employees, staff. And I'm just inviting you to have an open mind and try reimagining the renovation. Um, with the focus on achieving the objectives, but in a balanced way, uh, budget-wise. So, just to review, this is what we've been hearing, um, that we have these core objectives. Um, everything that the police dispatchers need is really important, um, we have a pending, um. Hope to have the mental health clinicians program fully funded by the county after a pilot. Uh, we've talked about the need for privacy, ADA accessible restrooms, improved air quality, natural light, and making sure visitors who walk in know where they're supposed to go. So, um, this is uh the, a detail from the beef, the existing and proposed. And just so you can orient, I've put a red rectangle around the general atrium area. So you can see how it goes from a condition of being an open space to being largely filled in. And I've also circled in purple the three restrooms, and uh. I just wanted to note that two of those are being slated to be relocated, so that would be a lot of plumbing work. Underground, uh, underneath the bottom slab of the building. Um, do focus in the atrium on the fact that these, wherever you see these gray rec- uh, squares. Those are the support columns. So, I went through um carefully as the best I could with the diagrams. And using math and millimeters and calculations, and these are the, this is what I come up with as the. Uh, changes in added functional area that this project would give us. Uh, I won't go through it in detail, but uh. In, in a, if, for example, the, the larger dispatcher area, area becomes eighty-five square feet. Larger, um, there's a larger lounge and break area, which is really nice, um. There's one additional small workspace, and then there are four large rooms. Which in some cases are conferences or interviews, or, or like a sergeant office, um. There is a little more storage space, um, the, next to the new, four new rooms, the biggest item is the four hundred thirty square feet. Of the open floor, um, that is added in, in the deck over of the atrium, does that make sense? So, the bottom line is that. Um, we would end up spending about nine hundred eighty-five dollars per square foot. To get an additional seventeen hundred and ten square feet. Um, the biggest cost in that is decking over the atrium, which adds four hundred thirty square feet of usable space. It, it does have some downsides, it reduces the airflow and the natural light, as you can see in the picture. It's not to be discounted how the light pours into that area. The, the new flooring above doesn't really meet staff or client needs, our new library has the gathering and exhibit space. And it, it would take structural work, um, more than any other part of the project. And it disconnects the police department from the rest of um, the building in, in a way that would be permanent. So, when we look at uh nine hundred eighty-five, and again, that's my rough calculation per square foot. Um, that is more than what, what we're paying for the library project, which is about seven hundred per square foot. Um, and I derive that with, by taking fifteen and a half million and dividing it by. About twenty-two thousand total square feet of uh either new or renovated space, so. Um, in researching this, uh, nine hundred eighty-five per square foot is, is quite a bit higher than what you see in typical renovation costs. For office space, as you can see there, um. Uh, so, that I, I think that we can be open to a third way. Of adding non-structural space at lower cost. Uh, here you see on the, on the ground floor level, that because we have those existing columns that I pointed out earlier. There is room to fill in up to uh the atrium and uh. And possibly a little beyond with non-structural walls. That would still allow an, an opening that would go up all three floors. but would greatly extend the amount of space available um through simple non-structural walls. And I've got some pictures on the side there of, you know, the two of the areas um that are currently between um the columns and the wall. So when I you do the math, there's about six hundred fifty square feet maybe available there. Uh I already mentioned this, but I also would add that if you focus on doing non-structural work, there in the lower left, you see the bathroom that won't move. And that's gonna be a lot, a lot more expensive to increase from forty-five square feet to sixty-five, which is what you need for ADA. And if we could renovate the other two bathrooms in place, that would save us tens of thousands of dollars, I think. Um up on the third floor, we have uh this spacious area um on the Maple Avenue side. And we also have adjacent to that, when you come off the elevator, as you head towards the the city manager's office, you we have that reception area, which is largely unused and but it could be, so that area could be closed in as an office, um possibly for the mental health clinicians. Um and then the area that the larger area with the furniture in it right now, that could be a reception area. Um there's other possibilities that, you know, people could look into. Um but that is where the light comes through, and uh there'd be ways to create some workspace in there without blocking that light. So getting near the end here, um my my point here is that I really believe that creative use of the existing or underutilized space could reduce the costs. So on that ground level, it looks like there's possibly six hundred fifty square feet that could be closed in with non-structural walls using those columns. The third floor uh depending on on how you develop it, that windowed space has it at least three hundred and seventy square feet and possibly more. And then that underutilized reception area, I forgive forgive me, I shouldn't call it underutilized, but that's a hundred fifty square feet. And it could be closed in by adding two non-structural walls. So when you add that all up, you could get eleven hundred square feet of functional space, potentially meeting all the current project needs except for one work or meeting space. And then on top of that, if you could keep the re- restrooms in their current locations, that would help. I think I I neglected to point out up here at the bottom that by the math, it looked like that excluding the atrium deck over, this project was gonna create about thirteen hundred square feet. And as I look at uh adding up those numbers, you could get eleven hundred possibly without decking over the atrium. And so that would just be minusing one office or or one of the, one of the types of office spaces, of there about two hundred square feet each. So to conclude, nine hundred eighty-five per square foot is three, four times the typical cost for commercial office renovation. It's uh forty-one percent more costly per square foot than the new library, and I would submit that that's too much. Um I think we could get most of that space without closing in the atrium and meet all of our core objectives for a more reasonable price. So the recommendation I'm asking our group to consider, and I'll share this with you is, and I'll answer more questions, but that, you know, we can meet our needs more affordably. We, the building is twenty years old, which came with design limitations, we know that, and we've been picking away at them, auditorium, lobby, recreation, offices, third floor areas are getting done. Um but we have this design ready to go, but it seems really expensive and uh our, I think as our oversight function, it's our job to say, wait, do we really have to spend that much to get these objectives done? I also personally don't like to see the atrium ice, the police department getting isolated in a total basement. And I'd like to see that department continue to be integrated, and that might have been integrated with the rest of the city offices. And that might have been the goal of the atrium in the original design. So uh you know, if just if we aimed to to keep this project to something on the beyond the high end of estimates for per square foot, four hundred dollars per square foot, and you add another twenty percent for fees contingencies, that'd be about five hundred twenty-eight thousand. And uh I would like us to consider supporting this reasonable level of spending. So thank you. I'm sure I went a little over five minutes. I apologize.
Thank you, Councilmember Schlegel. Are there any questions? Councilmember Hanzak?
Thank you for this interesting presentation, Councilmember Schlegel. Um I am curious if you have yet spoken with staff or perhaps we could hear a little bit from staff right now about, um let's just say that you know, that that a lot of this were uh accurately describing uh what is feasible, which I don't, I you know, I don't know without asking a lot of questions, but let's just say that that were true. Did you ask uh about what would be involved? And how much it would cost to create uh this new design that you uh are suggesting could be more affordable?
Uh no, I did not. Um I am not an architect. Um I'm not a construction expert. I s- I simply want to derive how much functional new space were we gonna be getting? And so what would that come to on a square foot basis? And when I saw that it overshot like normal costs for new renovated space as opposed to new construction, I was, I was kind of shocked and I thought that w- we owe it to ourselves to to get a second opinion, so to speak, and to have a a really close look. Perhaps what is the case is that what what this project is, is a a snipped off section of of what was originally the pro- the proposal for the entire ground floor, which would um come with um I guess some cost efficiencies. And that maybe if you started with just saying what can be done in this space, you'd come out in some way with different arrangements of walls, restrooms, et cetera.
Um are staff prepared to provide any comments on this, or is this, is this your first time seeing this?
Yes, thank you for the question. Um and and first of all, thank you, uh Councilman Schlegel for uh all the thoughts and time that you put into this. Now, we have not seen it before, as Councilmember indicated, and frankly, to give it a serious look is gonna take some time. We we certainly are not in a position to comment uh on the fly.
Understood, and I um I was only able to pull this together in the last forty-eight hours, so thank you.
Thank you. Could you give us this, I'm sorry, uh Mayor Kamathik, I may continue my line of questioning for the staff? May I continue? Sorry, you're muffled in it. Is that a yes? I'm gonna take that as yes, I cannot hear.
I do wanna remind folks um that we have another thirty-six minutes to um continue, thirty-two minutes to continue our discussions regarding the reconciliation list. And I wanna make sure that if this isn't ultimately leading to a item on the reconciliation list, that we can um table discussion regarding, you know, changes to the design and layout um for another time, and we stick to the reconciliation list, but but I will allow folks um another five minutes or so to ask additional questions. Uh so, Councilmember Hanzak?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I think it does relate to the reconciliation items, or or if it doesn't, we need to, we need that clarified. So um could the staff kindly comment on uh what is involved in the timeframe for getting any kinds of new designs done? Does it usually take a year? Uh if you were to say go after a new design, and would it also require um inherently that we would have to give back the two hundred and eighty-five capital grant funding that we got from the state? That we are going to get from the state?
It would be two hundred, yeah.
Excuse me, I misspoke.
Director Braithwaite, are you in any position to comment on timeline?
A- at this point, no. I mean, there would be sort of a multi-phased approach. First, we'd have to look at to make sure we even understood the concept. I mean, firstly, I don't know what non-structural walls are or what that would entail. So first, we'd have to sort of go through it internally to see where we have questions. And then beyond that, uh we would have to decide if we were gonna bring our architects into an evaluation of this, but it uh the design itself originally took um almost a year uh with the various um back and forth. Um and and I I I could not tell from my brief um viewing this evening what those, particularly those limited spaces on the first floor would be um capable of you know, what function they would hold. Um if they have doors, um yeah, I just couldn't couldn't tell with that um linear type of space, what it could potentially be used for.
Thank you, Darryl. And I I absolutely would believe we would need to utilize a professional to review this, uh our architect or some other architect. I think that's uh, you know, none of us are architects or construction engineers, so uh ultimately to know whether something is feasible and ultimately would be subject to uh being permitted would would require some real professional expertise uh that we would need to draw upon.
And and could you, the the other question, would we have to give back grants if we if we simply were to revert to design stage? I just want clarity on that question, please.
I don't have the answer to that. Uh there is a certain amount of time uh within which monies are supposed to be spent. But there's also the question of scope. If the scope of the project train changes significantly, and I'm not saying this does that, but if it does, that might also have a bearing on our eligibility to uh utilize those funds.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember DeBalle?
I I was going, uh thank you, Councilmember Schlegel, for putting this together and putting this out there. Um I was gonna ask some of the same questions that uh that Councilmember Hansak uh asked. I'm not an architect. I'm not gonna try to get into whether there's enough room to do the ADA bathrooms in the spot you've got and all of that. But I, from a financial point of view, there seem to be a couple of costs in going in this direction, and one of them is that there would have to be a professional assessment that would cost some kind of money from somewhere. Um which I I don't know if you factored into your reduction that line item there. Um and and it also seems to me that that delaying six months to a year, um if we're worried about costs going up in the next few months, that just guarantees that it're gonna go up even further, and we might wind up not so f- the the square foot dollar amount might not be what it looks like right now. Um and so I'm, from a financial point of view, I'm I'm not, it I'm not sure this is such a great move, but um I really appreciate you putting it out there. I did by self-measure, and the distance between the poles in the be- in the police level, uh where the atrium comes uh atrium wall would come straight down if if there were a wall there. And the existing dispatcher wall is six feet, so we would be buying in answer to Daryl's implied question about the corridor distance that uh space there. We'd be buying six mo- six more feet in that room.
Yeah.
So that's not a lot, and so
Yeah, that's, that area you see here, a hundred fifty square feet, that is
Six feet.
Yeah, to taking this length and, you know, six by sixteen, I think is what it is, yeah.
Yeah, and then there'd be the two
This wall would move out, for example. Um and again, I didn't wanna get into architectural proposals. Um I will say though that in talking to someone who does this type of construction, what I was, I'm probably not using the right term, but what I was referring to as non-structural walls would be walls that don't require new columnar support and aren't supporting a s- uh an additional floor above them. And so the the understanding that um a construction person gave me was that you could you could cheat out an outer wall of these spaces and get like a nine-foot uh deep room. I don't know what that does for code, but yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Schlegel. Councilmember Hansak, do you have another question? Can you, can you lower your hand? Councilmember Lana?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um I wanted to say a couple of things. One is that um if if this is a way to save us a lot of money, then a little bit of time to analyze it fully is a really good idea because haste makes waste. And um when we take a look at the design of moving two bathrooms, I'd really like to even understand why that is in the picture, maybe it's absolutely impossible to fit an ADA bathroom into the current locations, but it is uh, you know, the kind of thing where it's worth taking a closer look. Um I believe uh Councilmember Schlegel that you did calculate into your total the costs of the re- the revisiting and redesign by a professional when you came up with the math, but correct me if I'm wrong on that point.
I took the same, yeah. The um the two eighty-five that was added to the to the full project as uh contingency and fees came to twenty-five, about twenty percent of it, so I so here I I said if hypothetically it could be done for four hundred per square foot, adding another eighty thousand um would be adding another twenty percent, and so that was in my calculation.
Okay, so thank you. What's the final thing?
But adding, sorry, adding another eighty dollars per square foot, yeah.
For what? I'm sorry.
For fees and contingencies. Um and yeah, obviously inflation is gonna continue, uh we assume, but it would be inflation on fewer materials going this route, so yeah.
Uh the final thing I'll say is that there are a couple of other pending proposals for this year that that nobody has objected to in any way that expand internal spaces by building, you know, sheet rock walls in effect, such as the work being done for IT slash communications on the third floor and uh moving the reception area elsewhere. And um and those have relatively low price tag in our budget, and they have, they have, you know, garnered zero um uh concern on the part of the of the council. Uh the suggestions that were made by Councilmember Schlegel for the third floor, uh which addressed the the point that that Daryl Braithwaite made last week about the fact that we can't build walls in in the spot where people eat french fries, I referred to the lounge as the french fry area that that Daryl referred to or the uh Director Braithwaite referred to. Uh I think this is actually a very smart solution that's been suggested for moving the reception area there, as long as we're moving it anyway to accommodate the um the construction inside the third floor for the IT and communications team, and that the space where that other reception area is now the lower photograph there, that is readily tran- transformable into um uh space for offices that can be private. And uh if we do, the point that was made by you, Councilmember Hansak, about whether, I believe it was you, who said, well, we have to give back the two hundred thousand dollars that was essentially uh linked up with the uh the clinical um staff. That would be a very logical place to build with a couple of sheet rock walls and some doors, clinical staff space, and that could be where we dedicated those funds, and it could actually happen as quickly as the planned construction for the IT team, which could even be part of the same project, and it could be done whether or not anything else goes forward. We we needn't see this as uh completely all joined up together. That could be a freestanding project to make sure that we have that space. Indeed, we need that space i- i- sooner than this project could possibly be done. If we're gonna run that pilot at any point during the two-year period that the pilot was supposed to happen, we need space for two clinicians. So I mean, even there, we have the opportunity to make some adjustments that meet some of our critical needs without doing the entire costly project. Thank you.
So um I wanna make sure that we we move on to um the re- kind of circling back to the reconciliation list, but um I do want to highlight a couple points. I know that this may feel new to some, but the council has been working on this since twenty thirteen. Um the architect was brought in in twenty thirteen. Design began in twenty nineteen. There's been back and forth regarding the scope, regarding the design, regarding the layout um for over a decade on this particular project. So I want it to be, I I just, not to say that we can't relook at things, but I I So I want it to be, I I just, not to say that we can't relook at things, but I I want to stress the point. Because I don't want the narrative to be, oh, the council, they're just rushing into this thing. No. There's been multiple councils that have. Talked about this issue, had to budget towards this matter, who've had conversations with staff, who've talked to multiple old. Uh, ar- architects, who've had design shown to them, who've had to make decisions around scope and budget for over a decade. So again, I appreciate Councilmember Schlegel's desire for us to try to think through another, another way. Um, but I will say this, um. We have been, and 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 people who ha- I'm not an architect, I'm not an engineer. But we have hired and paid for a plethora of folks who have those special, those specializations. To get them to provide us and we've paid for designs, which have cost hundreds of thousands, a couple hundred thousand dollars. To to get us to this place, right? Um, and so I think what is before us now. Is the question of do we want to fund this project and at what level? I I think that we can do lots of m- mental gymnastics trying to figure out amongst ourselves about which. Which way we would perhaps try to make that happen, but the question before. The council is how much money are we willing to put in the budget towards this project, if any at all? So I I just want to m- make sure that we're kind of going back to the purpose of tonight. Um, which is to have some of these discussions regarding the reconciliation items. That are on the table for us to vote on and the impact that it would have on the FY twenty-six budget.
Uh, Mayor Sears, yeah, I I. Uh, sorry, can maybe recognize, yeah. I just, I very much appreciate that. I don't wanna take any more time. My my goal was to present and to allow people some time to think. Um, I'm happy to answer further questions through emails. Uh. One question did occur to me and and I appreciate your review of how many years this development process went. And if if I could ask. Do you know or the do staff know whether the the current um renovation that we're looking at, the atrium close-in, et cetera? Is that a custom-designed project um that was redesigned at that scope? Of of space to be impacted or is it? Is it a fraction of of a project that was a much larger design that's been isolated out? In other words, did we pay for that specific design or we paid for a larger design and then mostly a a carve-out of it?
I could just add, we we paid for this specific design. Uh, prior to that, we had a concept for um. Space needs for the entire first floor. And then out of that, we identified the focus areas and then we paid for the design. Uh, for this specific plan.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so let's let's go back to the reconciliation list. And seeing that we don't have any additional um items. To add, um, let's uh, let's go ahead and and take a couple of easier items, um. Are there a- any concerns with the uh reduction of the public works uh facility design? Um, project that has been proposed by staff? All those in favor of keeping keeping that money in or reducing that money? Okay, seeing no, no objections where I'm trying to come again, put things in terms of things that could be a go. Um. Let's go back to Councilmember DeBala's uh county tax credit. Item. Um, do, are there any quick hand votes in terms of uh support in terms of uh this item? Again, just this is just so that when we, when we do the votes, I kinda know how to how to schedule them. Okay? All right, one, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, we have six on this one. Oh, seven. Okay, it's unanimous. Um. And given that we've already talked through the um. The restricted covenants, and I know that we're we're hoping that it is not fifty thousand dollars to post this thing um in the paper. Um. But I do wanna get a a feel for uh, we'll take these as a pair. Um, all those that would generally support moving forward with the restricted covenants. Work. Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Okay, that's unanimous. Okay. Thank you all so much. Okay, let's look at. Um, and I'm sorry, I'm jumping around because I'm trying to see which items are gonna be uh. Uh, okay, are there, let's do the uh emergency rental assistance. Um, all those in favor of.